Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, December nineteenth city council meeting. Clerk, can you please call the... Here. 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 Here.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
By allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the public hearing portion. I'm going to call the public hearing to order for the two thousand twenty-two property tax levy in the amount of three million seventy-two dollars and... Three million seventy-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
It's tricky when you get big numbers like that.
Yeah. Anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment regarding the public hearing portion of this meeting? See none? I'm looking for a motion to close public hearing. Alderman Gleb?
Yeah, I'll make that motion to close the public hearing for the two thousand twenty-two property tax levy.
Thank you. Alderman Santee?
I will second the motion.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Gleb?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Hey, counsel. At this time, I am looking for a motion to adopt the two thousand twenty-two property tax levy ordinance in the amount not to exceed...
No, in the exact amount. Is that right, Carolyn? Yes.
In the exact amount, not to exceed...
No.
Nope, in the exact amount of three million seventy-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Got it? Looking for a motion? Alderman Gleb?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second, Alderman Miller?
Can I just say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to point out for the members of the public and those that are here tonight who knows online that this is a flat property tax levy this year. So I don't know, what is that, Carolyn, like eleven out of twelve years or something like...
Correct, eleven out of twelve.
That we've ma... The last twelve years that we've maintained a flat or reduced property tax levy. Thank you.
Hey, Derek. Any questions or comments by counsel? See none? Open it up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment? Jerry? You know how this works. Please say your name and address for public record. You might have to hit the mic. Yes.
Okay. Jerry Camden, forty-eight twenty-three Loyola Drive, Henry. First of all, I love the new council chambers. This looks awesome, very professional. I always thought we should be spread out on both sides. I think everything is wonderful. Love the mic because nobody can ever hear me, so this is all awesome. Um, so, um, I wanted to come tonight because a couple of weeks ago, I read in the paper that one of the funeral homes in town were requesting a liquor license.
Jerry, hold on. This isn't the public comment. This is just the comment regarding the motion that we've...
Yeah, but she's halfway through it.
You're just...
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I messed that up.
Sorry, go ahead.
You want me to go ahead?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry, guys. I should know better. Anyway.
Oh, good.
So, um, I... Most of you guys know I'm a licensed clinical professional counselor. And when I read that, I got very concerned because one of the specialties that I work with clients on is grief counseling. And while I realize that people may be drinking out in the parking lot or before or after a funeral service, I will tell you that their emotions are heightened. And adding alcohol to that just is not a good scenario. Many times when family members gather anyway, there can be friction, they're sad, their emotions are out of control, and just adding alcohol to it really is not the appropriate place for a time that should be somber and reverent and allowing people to show their respect for the deceased. So I just... I felt very passionately about that from a mental health standpoint. And even if, as I read in the paper, other communities are doing it, it doesn't mean that we should. And I just feel very strongly about that, and I wanted to share that with all of you. The second thing I wanted to share is regarding term limits. So I have utmost respect for anyone who serves in public, who is a public servant. And I want to thank each and every one of you for your service to the community. I have worked at different levels of government, congressional, the state of Illinois, and the city. And I think across the board, there should be term limits. And the reason for that is simply because I think new blood, new ideas, we can get stagnant. I often referred to Alderman Gleb with utmost respect because of the history that he had of the community, that knowledge I didn't have. So while I respect that longevity has some merit, I also believe that staff can provide that history when it's relevant for any issue that's coming up. So I... While I did serve sixteen years, I wish I had only done twelve because, quite honestly, I think twelve years is an appropriate number. Regardless of what that number is, though, I really encourage you to consider term limits. I realize that that wouldn't be effective for this next election. It would have to go to the next one, but... So that gives you four years to think about it, but I really will encourage term limits for a change of ideas and giving more people an opportunity to serve in the community. So again, I apologize that I messed up when I came up here, but I do thank all of you for your service and wish you all a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Jerry. You too. All right. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Alderman Gleb?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Hey, counsel. There is no one here for a public comment, as I know the two gentlemen that are in the audience are here for items that are on the agenda. So I'll move on to the consent agenda. Item six A through six E, I'm looking for a motion to approve those items. Alderman Santee?
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items six A through six E as presented.
Thank you. Alderman McClatchy?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Discussion on any of these items by counsel? See none? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Black?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Hey, counsel. Next item on the agenda is seven A, a budget amendment and facade grant at fourteen oh six North Riverside Drive after the Fox. I'm looking for a motion to approve an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty-two... Two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three budget in the amount of ten thousand dollars and approval of a facade grant in the amount of ten thousand dollars for the property located at fourteen oh six North Riverside Drive after the Fox Restaurant. Alderman McClatchy?
I'll move to approve seven A.
Thank you. Second, Alderman Harding?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Discussion by counsel? Alderman Gleb?
Yeah, again, I commend the property owner as far as moving forward with fitting into the redevelopment of the downtown area, especially along Riverside Drive. But again, I can't support the fact that we keep changing and adding on to the budget, amending it constantly for this facade grants. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments by counsel? Alderman Santee?
No, I know, I believe Sean Summers is in the audience, but I just want to thank him and his family. I believe it's... Sean, correct me if I'm wrong, forty or forty-one years? Forty? Just over forty? And it does... It's a concern having a budget amendment. The timing of this one with the Riverwalk being completed in front of their establishment. You know, I look forward to them being able to get this completed and having the Riverwalk being open in that area and making his facility using both sides in regards... I know he's doing some work in the back. Actually, if you live on a river, you define it as a front on a river, but then he's also doing work on that entryway, which definitely needed it on the Riverside Drive side. So I look forward to them doing this work and I wish them good luck for another forty years. Thank you.
Alderman McClatchy, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to echo some of that. We got a business here that's been in business for forty years. And yeah, this will help their business, but it's going to help Riverside Drive, the river. It's all going to fit in and look nice. So congratulations on forty years and hopefully you get forty more.
Any other questions, comments by counsel? Anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment regarding this item? Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman McClatchy? Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Gleb?
No.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Hey, counsel. Next item on the agenda is seven B, is a budget amendment and bid waiver for the purchase of police vehicles. I need a motion to approve an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget in the amount of one hundred and seventy-four thousand nine hundred and eight dollars and ninety-six cents to waive the competitive bidding process to purchase in-stock vehicles locally and authorization to purchase four Chevrolet vehicles from Castle Auto Group in McHenry for a total amount not to exceed one hundred and seventy-four thousand nine hundred and eight dollars and ninety-six cents. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I had a mathematical error. Thank you to Director Lynch for correcting it. The request for the budget amendment, the purchase amount is actually one hundred and seventy-seven thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-six cents. But I just wanted to add, as counsel knows, the city's availability to purchase vehicles over the last couple of years has been a challenge, to say the least. We have successfully purchased all the vehicles other than the Public Works plow wing truck that's still in the works, other than police vehicles this year. We have been unable to purchase our marked patrol fleet vehicles this year because orders are not being taken by any of the manufacturers and pricing has not been established as well. We don't know what that pricing is going to look like. So what we're asking is to purchase vehicles that we would normally purchase after May one of two thousand twenty-three now, which are unmarked administrative detective vehicles that are bought off of lots in Lou, so we do not have a double stacking of vehicle purchases for the next fiscal year. That compounded with the fact when we originally had brought forward the plan to buy vehicles this year, we were still utilizing the loan program that we had established a couple of years ago. The biggest change that's happened since then is that the city and council has adopted a capital vehicle replacement fund through the use of the new utility tax that you have approved, and it's on the advice of the finance director that we do not take any more loans for these vehicles, that we purchase them outright when we can, so we're not pushing that loan program farther down the road. So that's the purpose of the budget amendment, rather than to go through the loan program that we originally had planned earlier prior to the budget being approved and the utility tax being approved. And I can answer any questions that counsel has.
Thank you, chief. Like to open up... No, I'm looking for a motion to approve six... Seven B? Alderman Miller?
I'll make the motion to approve seven B amended by Chief.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Harding?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Discussion by counsel? Alderman Miller?
I love that we're getting four colors.
These are the unmarked vehicles, so they're kind of supposed to blend in.
Any other questions, comments? Alderman Gleb?
Yeah. The money for this, is this coming out of the reserves or what that we...
No, it is out of the COMED.
I'm sorry?
The COMED money that we enacted in July.
Okay, so this is more not reserves, but additional income over and above what we had normally figured when we did the budget, correct?
Correct. The COMED money was for this purpose, for replacement.
Okay, so it looks like it's a perfect opportunity to have that money, just like we did with Road Pro... Project a couple of years back where we had extra money over and above in there. And I commend the chief to jump on it right away. And again, like you said, I don't like not bidding on things, but I can understand in this situation, you know, especially lately, the supply and demand has been really rough. So I'm glad to see that we've got it.
I would add to that, although there's an ownership change that happened at Gary Lane Castle Auto Group, the new dealership, has been extremely generous with the city. They want to continue that partnership and their pricing shows it compared to other quotes that we got as well.
Any other questions, comments by counsel? Alderman Santee?
Yep. So out of the local dealerships, chief, this is the only one that actually bid on it or actually gave us a price?
No, we went to Bus Ford. We're... You know, we don't... Sedans aren't... Nobody's making cars anymore, and they're not really that first out for police. We switched to SUVs a long time ago. We can't get them locally, so there is no lower base model type vehicles available at Bus Ford and the SUV model. They only have pickup trucks, and the quote they gave us for their pickup truck came in just over fifty-one thousand was the best price. There's no pickup trucks available at Sunnyside Dodge, and there was only one Durango available, and it was much more than we were willing to pay as well. So this was the only in-stock vehicles that had the most competitive pricing.
Thank you. And just a quick explanation, two... Actually, two out of the four of the vehicles are actually going to be pickup trucks, which is something, I don't know, unique or different?
It will be the... We do have one pickup truck in our fleet right now, a Ford F-150, so these would be the second two. And again, we're... We can't... The pricing on SUVs is going up too, so this was an opportunity to get something similar to an SUV, but actually pay a little bit less money.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, comments by counsel? Open it up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a public comment regarding this item? See none? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Harding?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Gleb?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Hey, counsel. Next item on the agenda is seven C, is a revolving loan fund request for seventeen eighty-six North Richmond Road Wolf and Run LLC. I need a... I'm looking for a motion to approve a revolving loan fund request to Wolf and Run LLC located at seventeen eighty-six North Richmond Road in the amount of five thousand dollars. Director Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Jett. Attaches a revolving loan fund request in the amount of five thousand dollars for Wolf and Run LLC. This is located in the McHenry Plaza Shopping Center at seventeen eighty-six North Richmond Road. The loan is to put a wall sign above their unit. Currently, they have no sign. They're also going to put a sign out by the pylon sign on by Richmond Road as well. Director Lynch did review the financial information provided by the applicant, Mr. Wilson, which included some annual sales, bank statement, business plan, which is attached, as well as a list of expenses. Formal financial statements were not available. And he did... He has tried to obtain a loan from a commercial bank, but has been denied in the past. He's been open since March of two thousand twenty-two, and due to incentives, has not been paying rent on his lease as of yet, but will start paying rent in March or April, February, March of next year, basically. So he's looking to strengthen his business. A sign will certainly help that endeavor. A loan agreement, a promissory note, and a personal guarantee are attached for a loan to be repaid within twenty-four months at a seven percent fixed interest rate. And the applicant is here to answer questions that counsel may have, as well as I'll be here to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Doug. Appreciate it. I'm looking for a motion to approve seven C as presented. Alderman McClatchy?
I'll move to approve seven C.
Thank you. Second, Alderman Miller?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Discussion by counsel? Alderman Santee?
Yeah, I want to thank Director Martin for giving me some time today on this. I wish Mr. Wilson good luck in his new endeavors. He's been there a little bit less than a year, so it does bring up some concerns. He's a new business. We're trying to get him up and running. I can see where this could benefit in regards to the getting the sign in. It's key. The first two years are key. And if this helps gets Mr. Wilson over the hump, great. I do have some concerns, though, because it's a new business and it's, you know, it's in its first few months. Though I will agree with this and, you know, and go with this and wish him good luck. Thank you.
Alderman Gleb?
Yeah, you say the petitioner is here?
Not at this time, sir.
Correct?
What's that?
The petitioner is here?
Yes, he is.
Could you come up to the podium? I've always considered myself a dog lover as much as anybody in this room, and I think we're going to give you your payment recognition right now. And if we could just take a minute or two, if you could just explain your business and people that are watching will get a little bit of a feel for what your business is about, and it might help you.
So we do have some other daycares and dog facilities in our town. What I bring to McHenry is something a little bit unique and a little different. We have what's considered an integrated facility, which means that dogs of all sizes, all breeds, play together in the same space. They're not separated out, big dog, small dog, generically excluded. With that, there's increased handling of the dogs. Thank you. There's increased handling of the dogs that's required, so some of the struggles I faced for the first six months of opening is... It's fine, she always makes a good show. It's like bringing your kid to work.
Hey, they embarrass me at home all the time, so don't feel...
Thank you. So we have an indoor dog park, which is similar to McBark Park, where you bring your dog and go play, except this is inside the facility where you are actually inside the building, secured with gates. Everything happens with the dogs inside that location. There's no outdoor spaces. And it's different. It's what people... If you look at the social media posts around here, if you look at Google, people search two to three thousand times a month the words indoor dog park. I'm the only one... The closest one is Addison that offers. So we do indoor dog park where you can buy a membership, very similar to like a health club where you can come every day. We're open, play with your dog when you want, for as long as you want, come and go as you please. And then we also offer daycare where you can leave your dog with us for two, four, or the whole day, two hours, four hours, or the whole day. Making it a little bit different, unique, is the fact that it's wide open space, it's not divided out into like three little twenty by twenty spaces. The dogs have a much more interactive experience, a much more enriching experience. So it's a much more enriching experience. One thing I can tell you about my business is it's innovative, it's something new to the area. Most people, when they walk in it, they don't really know what to expect, but it's something that benefits dog owners, and it's complimentary to Reese's and to some of the other businesses within the area where I'm located. We opened in March. I strictly opened as a dog park just at night and in the evenings and weekends because summertime is not the strongest for dog daycare to be established, knowing that when I opened my business, Richmond Road got ripped up the next month. I had to endure the building. I had to endure... I had to endure the building out of the Aspen Dental, the Well Now, the reconstruction of the Target Big R unit into the storage unit. I've survived all of that, all summer, meeting all of my expenses. I'm current on all of my bills and expenses. Coming in February, I do have some increased costs. With that, in October, I had launched the start of the daycare services when everybody started going back to school, and I have seen thirty to forty percent marked growth from October daily. From March until now, I've averaged thirty new dogs a month registered in my system. I mean, we already have just short of three hundred dogs registered for play at my business. This past week, we hit two thousand visits to my business, and I've done all this with no sign and people not knowing where I'm at, driving all of my business without big dollar advertising. I drive all of it through Facebook and local marketing. I've done it by word of mouth. The sign is an expense that it's a big hit on my dollars that I'm saving right now to cover, you know, the new growth coming in February of my expenses, but that sign will double my business. I mean, it's a fact. And I know we can't have... We can't put banners up on the front of the buildings, but I've done everything I could possibly think of in those windows to make myself visible. But with the fact that it's a business that doesn't carry an inventory, banks look at me and say, "You don't have anything for us to take if you don't pay your bills." So that's where I run up with. I don't have a warehouse full of collateral that they can write the loan against. So that's why the bank told me no. They said, "You got a great gossip, you got a great business, but you don't have anything for us to take if you walk away tomorrow." So because all of my income is the membership fees and the daily fees for daycare. So I've been a dog walker and in a home service provider for six years prior to opening that I service most of McHenry County daily up until the pandemic hit, and I ended up stuck at home. And that's where I kind of dreamed up a dog daycare facility because when my customers started going back to work, they stayed at home and they were working from home and they still had their dogs, and they're like, "We need somewhere for the dog to go now. We don't need you to come to our house. We want you to take our dog for the day." Obviously, that marketing company bought the plaza, put up the deal that they did. I jumped a little quicker than I was ready to as far as building the nest egg for the business build out, investment-wise and things like that. I mean, as I'm spending it, the world is eating away at the other half of it, so things got tight. So I thought, "What the heck? Maybe you guys can help me." So... But I believe in the concept. I think if... I have yet to have anybody like walking and go, "This was crazy. Why'd you do this?" Every time I hear somebody say, "This is wonderful. This is really needed here." So...
Perfect. All right.
Thank you.
I'm trying to calm down.
No, that's fine. I just applaud the concept, I really do.
It's an undertaking. I thought the staffing was going to be no big deal because I had so many people applying, but when I actually literally opened the doors and put the dogs in the park and got to see what it took for me to control the play and to control things, that's been the biggest thing, is just finding the right humans to be there. So I'm a little light staff still, but we're growing. We have about ten dogs a day in there every day for daycare now. And my goal, it was that's the benchmark I need to be at right now is ten a day. By February, I need to be double that. So that's... So far, so good.
Right. Any other questions for the applicant? Alderman McClatchy?
Yeah. I just want to echo what you said. I, as you know, last week, I looked for your place. I couldn't find it. I went up and down that strip, and I thought you were part of the liquor store, so I think...
Right. It's hard to be... It's hard to distinguish yourself with your neon versus their neon.
So I think a sign... A sign up above is really going to help you out. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right.
And a clarification, the roadside will be being added to the marquee that's already existing. I'm not adding another...
Correct.
Footprint. I'm just taking the third space.
All right. You may have a seat. Thank you. You may have a seat. Thank you. Can you hit the button if you don't mind? Thanks, sir. All right. Clerk, can you please call the room?
Alderman McClatchy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Hardy?
Yes.
Alderman Glenn?
Yes.
Alderman Santee?
Yes. Thank you, counsel. Good luck to you. Sean, good luck. Thank you for reinvesting back in McHenry. Uh, at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and turn this over to our Public Works Director, Troy Strange, and his team to give a presentation for fiscal year twenty, uh, twenty-three, through fiscal year twenty thirty-two for the Water and Sewer Fund Community Investment Plan. Troy?
Yep. Thank you, Mayor Jett, and thank you for your time tonight, uh, City Council. I will try to be efficient. Uh, this is the last council meeting before, uh, before Christmas. Um, so as you all recall, last year, we undertook, uh, both, the study, uh, and the effort to, um, look at our capital, capital cost projections for our water sewer funded assets and then set, uh, base fee, water sewer base fees accordingly. Uh, this is now, um, what's going to become, uh, the first of many annual updates for the implementation of the program. It was a ten-year projection. Uh, the, the other side of it, the comment money, Carolyn was referred to earlier, that was a twenty-year projection. This is a, a ten-year projection. And what's before you, uh, the document you have, you've got the, the document, it's the draft program. Um, and then you've also got all the slides that we're gonna be looking at here. So, uh, there, there are, it's a draft, because there, there are one or two minor changes that we're making, or looking at making, um, with, uh, some additional information that is coming in, um, that was, that's coming in, you know, after the, the due date for the submittal of, uh, of this presentation. So, um, before we kick off, I would like to introduce, uh, some of our critical public work staff, um, that work on our water sewer fund. Uh, all these staff, uh, were a big part of, um, putting this document together, putting these, uh, capital projections together, and will also be the team that is implementing, um, the projects as well on, uh, the, the project management side of things. So, um, we have, uh, Russ Adams, our wastewater superintendent, Steve Wirth, our field operations manager, Russ Rizika, our treatment operations manager, and then Brian Sheel, um, is the responsible operator in charge for our water system. So, um, and one of the reasons I wanted to bring these guys in front of you, um, is so all of, all of these men have over ten years of service to, yeah, Russ is still pretty young, um, to the city of McHenry, and all of them have the, the top licensure for their particular discipline for, for our facility. So we have, uh, class one wastewater operators, we're a class one wastewater facility, we have class B water operators, um, we have class B water facilities. So to, um, to be as redundant and, uh, and stacked with operators as, uh, as we are, is a real blessing for this city. So, these are the men that, um, your city's water and sewer systems are being operated under licenses. Um, so, next slide, please. Uh, so just to give, uh, everyone a little bit of a context about why this effort was undertaken to begin with, um, I wanted to revisit, uh, the look at the history of the water sewer fund. So this slide, um, was, or this chart was actually part of the presentation last year. Um, if you look, if you go back to the way our water sewer fund was funded before, prior to twenty fourteen, uh, the, the funding structure was, was fairly simplistic. Uh, we had an operating rate and our debt service fees, which pretty much made up, um, pretty much made up our, our, uh, water sewer rates. In twenty fourteen, we undertook a rate study, we hired H R Green to, uh, do a full-blown rate study. It was a, a lengthy process and it, uh, it was done in coordination with, uh, ultimately became the debt service, uh, setting the debt service fees for the wastewater treatment consolidation project, which obviously you're, you're all aware of. It's, uh, far and away the, the largest capital investment the city has ever made. Um, so, at that point, our, our rates and our, our debt service fees, uh, were set. Uh, one small change that was made was, it, that was the point at which we initiated the very first, um, base, water sewer base fee for, for the city of McHenry. And it was, it was a very modest fee. Uh, it wasn't really set based upon a capital program, um, to be implemented, but more just to initiate, uh, the concept of, of a base fee and the concept of capital replacement of assets and funding it through a, a specific fee. Uh, but however, if you look at the trend of the water sewer fund, um, despite those changes, the water sewer fund was, was on a, a pretty bad trend line. So, if you, if you refer to this chart, uh, the most important bars to look at are the orange ones. So the orange bars represent, uh, the fund balance of the five-ten and five-eighty fund. That is the operating and capital portion of the water sewer fund. Uh, you also have, uh, the, the blue, which is the, the water sewer capital development fees. Those are for system expansion, so we do, we do not consider those available for operating in capital, because tho- those are preserved for the major facilities expansions, um, that we have to undertake at some point, which we'll refer to on some, of slides in, uh, uh, later on in the presentat- presentation. So, again, you look at this fiscal year, uh, eighteen nineteen, that was, that was when the, uh, the balance of the fund, uh, just about bottomed out. And we actually, going into that fiscal year, or into fiscal year nineteen twenty, uh, we were one lift station project away from, uh, emptying out the balance of the fund. We actually, it was like two and a half million dollar project, that, that fund was down to about one point five. So that, that project, fully implemented, would have, um, put the fund in the red, would have put it, uh, in the negative. Um, but we've gone from negative to positive, um, still, it's all good. Um, and we're getting to a point of stability, uh, with the fund. So, uh, if you go to the, the next slide, please. Um, so as all you, you all recall, uh, we implemented these water sewer base fees. Uh, the rationale behind how we set them, uh, they were not arbitrary. Um, the, we tried to kind of eliminate the guesswork, we tried to eliminate, um, sort of the subjectivity in it, and, uh, it was born out of a, a change in our, our philosophy to how we, uh, program, uh, capital improvements. Uh, we did the, the research in-house and the, what we essentially did was we quantified all the city's water sewer funded assets. So, everything from vehicles, equipment, facilities, uh, you know, wells, plants, water towers, uh, lift stations, every, every replaceable piece of, uh, of capital that we had, we defined what its, uh, expected service life was and its, um, and its replacement costs. We annualized those costs, s- sum them all together and we, we, what we quantified was we wanted to quantify how much essentially, how much essentially equity we need to be putting back in our system, how much money we need to be putting back into our system, just to replace what was depreciating out of it on an annual basis. Um, if you recall last year, um, when we do do audits of that fund, um, it wasn't a perfect match, um, but we, we did find that the number that we came up with, uh, matched within a relative order of magnitude to, uh, what we quantified through a separate audit of what our, uh, depreciation costs are. So, uh, once we had this annual number, we set, uh, our capital base fees based upon this projection. Uh, we had a few different, uh, optional programs we could take on or not take on, uh, one of which was a modest water main replacement program, uh, which was opted into. And then, uh, the base fees were set. So, uh, one thing that is important to note, it's the last point on this slide. So we set these fees as fixed fees, um, a fixed number. For the most part, it, it doesn't go, doesn't go up. Uh, when we add users to the system, uh, there is a, a small increase, but nothing that really keeps pace with inflation. But we've all experienced inflation and material costs the last couple of years. Um, so, e- every year that inflation does what it does, these fees do lose some purchasing power. So, uh, we are going to do our level best to fully implement this program, um, but just based upon what's happened in the last few years, uh, which was, you know, couldn't really be projected by anybody and, and was beyond a lot of people's control. Um, you know, we are gonna have to make some compromises as we go through, uh, this, this full program. Uh, so, next slide, please. So, uh, just to, to recap, the twenty-two, twenty-three program, it's summarized in pages six and seven of the report. Uh, each of these projects have been fully implemented, successfully implemented, with, uh, with one exception, that'd be item number three, the mill stream list station control upgrade. Uh, we are still pursuing that. We've just had to slow down the project development a little bit, uh, because of procurement issues uh, and because of some, uh, some implementation issues, we'll say, which I'm gonna explain on, uh, on a later slide. And then, uh, additionally, um, the, the water well fourteen development, um, that, the engineering, uh, portion of that project is currently ongoing. Uh, uh, the begin, the beginnings of the capital portion of that project are funded in next year and I'll explain that project a little bit, uh, a little bit later. So, next slide, please. Thank you. Um, so what we have here is the, the twenty-three, twenty-four program. Uh, again, it's summarized, um, in pages seven and eight, so we have, uh, a listing of those projects. And then also, each of these projects in the, in the document has, um, an individual, uh, project sheet attached, which gives, you know, kind of the, the little bit more refined details, uh, on the project. So this, this program is a one point two million dollar program. The revenues for the base fees every year come out to about one, one point one. Uh, we, we utilized, uh, less than we took in last year. So going over by a tenth, uh, of a million dollars or a hundred thousand dollars is, is something that can be absorbed, uh, pretty readily. And then we also have, uh, an additional capital development fee funded project. Um, again, that's, that's the drilling of the test well for well fourteen. So, um, one of the things we have going on right now is, uh, water plant on Green Street. Uh, one of our older wells, uh, is starting to experience a little bit of production loss. Um, right now, it's not a problem, um, but, uh, we're to a point where we need to be prepared to, to make up for that, that loss of production. So, um, we may have to re-drill, uh, we, we, we believe we will have to re-drill a, a well on that site and replace it at some point, and that's, that's what that project is for. Uh, next slide, please. So, uh, one of the things that, uh, I alluded to, uh, as far as the one struggle we had with, uh, the implementation of the twenty-two, twenty-three program, um, just kinda, it, uh, there was a theme, and I think some other directors here, it, it even goes to, uh, chiefs, uh, vehicle purchases, is, uh, the current procurement conditions and, and challenges that, that go along, um, with, uh, you know, just the, the conditions in, in today's world. So, the inflation costs, uh, are gonna become a little bit of an issue for the implementation and funding of the entirety of the program. But, um, we've also had some difficulty in securing contractors. And then, um, probably the, the biggest thing that we have, the, the biggest challenge that we have going for a lot of these projects, is we've tried to sculpt these as fairly modest, um, fundamentally necessary bare bones facilities maintenance projects. Um, the issue with that is a lot of them, um, they're control upgrades. Um, they're a blend of control upgrades and equipment replacement. And the challenge with them is, is that, uh, these control upgrades, a lot of the work is, um, S- SCADA and integration work. SCADA is basically our computer interface, um, with our physical equipment out in the field that allows us to monitor, uh, this equipment remotely. Um, this work is more like engineering work and more like a professional service than it is construction work. So to competitively bid out a, a blend of professional services and, uh, capital construction, um, it's, it's been a real challenge. We, uh, because we wanted to, um, show counsel and show ourselves frankly, um, that we were trying to act in good faith to adhere to city procurement policies. Um, we did prepare contract documents for the mill stream list station project. Um, we weren't able to get valid bid results. Uh, we, we have since, uh, sought a scope and fee from an engineer to go to, uh, much more of a design bid, build process. Um, they actually recommended that we, um, based upon the preliminary pricing we got, they actually recommended that we waive competitive bidding and just accept quotes and proposals. Um, so that's what we're intending to do to, to finish implementation of the mill stream project. Um, but you're gonna start to see more of these types of projects and the re, and the requests for the waiver of competitive bidding for the reasons of this blend of professional services and construction. Um, it, you're, you're gonna be seeing it on well projects, you're gonna be seeing it on list station projects. Um, we, we've tried it different ways. Um, it, it does, uh, seem to, to be the option that, that we have to, to success- successfully implement these maintenance projects, um, and not go to full-blown replacement of a lot of these very expensive facilities. Um, so I just, as these requests to waive competitive bidding come up, uh, we just wanted to prime you for the why behind that, so that you're not blindsided by it. Uh, again, you, you won't see that for every single water sewer project, but these, say, hundred thousand dollar plus or minus, these tweener projects with this unique blend, uh, you, you will be seeing. Uh, and then, y- and you'll see this in the capital planning for, uh, next year as well. The, the increase in capital costs from inflation, um, and from material increases, uh, they're getting very real. And I think, uh, we've got some preliminary costs for our road resurfacing program next year. Uh, I, I think you're looking at twenty, thirty percent increase in total capital construction costs. Um, okay, we're on the next slide. So, uh, again, because of, you know, those cost increases, if you look at the year twenty twenty-four on this chart, uh, we just kicked everything out that we couldn't fund in twenty-three into, uh, into year twenty twenty-four. Um, obviously, we won't have the, the revenues to do that. So, once we implement the, the twenty-three program year, we will start to work to resize, uh, right-size the program. Um, there may be some compromises that have to be made, uh, and some prioritization that has to happen. Um, fortunately, some of the more expensive projects were water main projects that have, uh, some easement issues, have some project development issues of lengthening the timeline to develop these projects anyways. Um, so we've got time. Uh, we have a, a solid program for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, that we intend to, you know, go to full implementation on. So, uh, next slide, please. Yeah. So, and then the last thing to touch on is just, uh, so we've, we've talked about some of our, uh, our, our base fee funded projects, we've talked about some of our capital development fee funded projects, which are for system expansion. Uh, these are probably our, some of our biggest capital projects, um, coming down the pipeline. Uh, so, many of which you've been briefed on, in fact, all of which you've been briefed on in the past. Um, some of them have funding identified for them, some do not. So, uh, water plant five, at some point, in addition to the replacement of that, that well that's, uh, you know, in the process of, uh, kind of long-term production loss. At some point, uh, we have four, uh, water plants right now. At some point, we may have to commission a fifth plant. Um, and then, uh, the well two replacement abandonment, so that well fourteen number, that's, that's the next well number in our, in our numbering sequence, but, uh, well fourteen is intended to replace well two. So those are, those are the same. Uh, both these two, first two projects, they, uh, the intention is to fund them, them with capital development fees, uh, at a later date. So, uh, if, you know, I, I won't have to go back to that slide up there, Derek, but, um, for counsel, that, the first bar chart, uh, the one, the one fund that was growing, oh, okay, thank you. The one fund that wa- that was and is growing, um, thanks to the, the blessing that we've had of some, of some, uh, residential development, uh, the, the blue fund balance is growing. So, we've been preserving that, um, and we've been kind of shrewd with how we use it for the purposes of preserving our ability to expand, uh, our system and prob- specifically our water production. Uh, that's probably gonna be our most, uh, likely immediate, um, facilities expansion, is to increase our water production. Uh, the third project that's listed is, uh, is one that we really don't completely have accounted for, how, uh, we will pay for the entirety of it. Um, when we first got those initial cost projections from I dot, they told us our utility relocation cost was gonna be, uh, three million dollars. Uh, right now, we're, uh, in preliminary design with Patrick Engineering, uh, who is also the phase two consultant for the I dot project. Uh, they gave us a cost estimate somewhere between twelve and fifteen million. Uh, we do think that's an overly conservative estimate. And we are working, uh, with them and with I dot, um, to bring down that number, uh, through a few means. Um, lining sewers to keep them in place, which is, can be done at a tenth of the cost. Um, and then, uh, seeing if we can get our water main replacement, um, piggybacked onto the, uh, the state contract, um, so that we can save on traffic control, save on mobilization. Um, and that, that typically is allowed for, so we're hopeful for, for that. So that, that three million dollars that, that I dot gave us, that was probably never realistic. Uh, but the, the initial, uh, cost, um, that I think was presented to you, uh, earlier this year, we also do think that's, um, an extremely conservative estimate that, um, so we'll probably land somewhere between the two. Uh, and when we do, um, that cost will need to be accounted for, because right now, it's not accounted for with our, um, capital development fees, because it's not system expansion, uh, and it's not accounted for in our base fees, because it's not a part of this ten-year, uh, program. Uh, and then the last two projects.
Just to clarify, sorry, if I could, we, we did set aside ARPA funding, uh, that's three point six. When we got the ARPA funding, the two, uh, waves of it, set that aside specifically for the Route Thirty-One project, but as Troy just mentioned, even if it's half of fifteen million, that still doesn't cover, uh, the full cost of the Route Thirty-One utility relocation improvements. Sorry, Troy.
No, thank you. Um, I was moving kinda fast anyway, so good to kinda pause for a second. Um, and then the, the last two are actually somewhat related and, uh, they're, they're related to, uh, our permit limit for phosphorus discharge for our wastewater plant. So, I'd like to have, um, Russ and Russ chime in on, uh, where we are at with our current phosphorus discharge limit, uh, where we are going in terms of, of the IPA mandate, um, and some of the opportunities that we have, um, to possibly get that situation under control and poss- possibly buy ourselves more time for compliance.
Thank you. Um, as Troy mentioned, the last two, uh, projects up there deal with phosphorus removal at the wastewater plant. That is a nutrient that we are, um, mandated by the state to remove before we put the water back in the river. Uh, McHenry has had a phosphorus limit since two thousand and six. We were one of the first, uh, municipalities on the Fox River to have this limit. Um, we have had no problem, um, getting to that limit. We, uh, currently use chemicals to, uh, help us get to that limit. Um, the aeration improvements, uh, the first project there, the, the aeration improvements, uh, number one, that will give us, um, better phosphorus removal. It will also allow us better control on the wastewater treatment plant as to how we treat the, the wastewater and what we can remove. Um, besides phosphorus, there's also nitrogen as another, um, another, um, contaminant or another, uh, another thing that we have to test for and remove. The aeration, uh, the aeration project will also help with the nitrogen removal. So that's kind of a, a, a two-handed, uh, project. Um, moving forward, uh, we just received, uh, the wastewater permits last for five years, they go on a five-year cycle. We just received our permit, uh, new permit this year in June? June of twenty-one. Um, and that that lays out our our current regulations, current requirements, and then um, phosphorus removal in the future. So right now, we are um, we are at a one milligram per liter, just so you have some idea of what we're talking about. We are at one milligram per liter in our phosphorus discharge. Um, our new permit that came out in June of last year uh, has a recommendation that that be reduced to point five milligrams uh, per liter by twenty thirty. We are currently um, on track working to lower our phosphorus discharge to make sure that we can achieve that. These uh, aeration improvements will also help. And there are, there are a few other things, Russ Adams is going to speak um, about some other things that we can do to kind of help give us a little bit more of a cushion or a little bit more of a buffer, a little bit more time to get these improvements done so we can be guaranteed to uh, reach our phosphorus limit of point five milligrams.
Um, yeah, so like Russ said, these two do dovetail together. Um, one of the things we're looking at doing, one of the conditions of that twenty thirty limit is that if we have a preliminary engineering design to make substantial improvements to the treatment process, then we have a five year grace period where the the actual limit doesn't have to be met until twenty thirty five. With regards to the aeration improvements, part of that would be commissioning a preliminary engineering study to determine whether or not those improvements are going to provide the type of process improvements we need to see to meet that limit, or if something else has to be done. In any, in any case, twenty thirty, if we do nothing, twenty thirty is the the date. We have to hit it by then. It's whether we do, you know, whether we commission a study, find an alternative method and start putting that process in motion to buy ourselves five extra years. Um, as Russ said, the limit has been one. Um, the permit was issued last year. We were currently running about a point six five monthly average at that time. Um, in the last fifteen months, since the new permits gone into effect, we've been able to reduce our monthly average to about point four nine. So technically, we're meeting that new limit. Um, but we don't have enough of a buffer for any sort of error. Anything happens that that upsets the process and we're violating our permit. So, um, like I said, one of the the key things we're looking at doing in the next year to two years is trying to identify what processes can be done, what the alternatives would be, and then whether, you know, whether it's something we can implement by twenty thirty five or whether we just shoot for this twenty thirty deadline um, carrying on on the path we've been on. So uh, I mentioned this is, right now, this is in the draft state. That that's probably the the one change that may cha- uh, happen from draft to final. Um, is we are getting costs and scoping out uh, what it would be uh, to to do that uh, preliminary engineering work. Because frankly, uh, when you're talking about what the cost can be for some of these facilities um, and the service lives of them, doing an engineering study for a hundred thousand dollars, hundred fifty thousand dollars uh, to buy yourself uh, five, five years, you annualize that cost, and that that alone is money well spent. Um, and it would give us that time to refine our operations, uh, give us that time to prepare financially, you know, for whatever um, we are compelled to do in terms of meeting our, meeting our limits. So um, this twenty thirty date, it's also, it's a common date in our water sewer fund. It also times out um, pretty well with um, some other uh, debt service fees that are going to be coming off the books. So we have uh, a twenty ten bond issuance that's going to be coming off the books at twenty thirty. Um, that also is around the same time that we are going to be, again, compelled by the state uh, to do a uh, a lead service replacement program. Um, so there's just a lot of things happening uh, around that twenty thirty planning horizon that um, if we can just get ourselves there, um, that uh, there will be some opportunities to probably to, we're probably going to have to kind of reorient and reset uh, where we are with our water sewer rates, base fees and debt service fees again. So it, it can be intimidating because the, you know, it's not too far away and there's a lot of things happening at that time. But it's also good because um, there are some opportunities because of what's coming on to and off the books at that time um, to to reset and reevaluate uh, and put ourselves, you know, again, to kind of a long term sustainable funding model. So uh, that is, that is everything I have. Thanks for your patience. Um, assuming you don't have any major questions or objections, we will bring this document uh, from draft to final and it will bring it forward for final approval during the uh, capital budgeting project, process uh, you know, around about March.
Yeah, Troy, um, you mentioned that possibly a new wa- new well because of the fact that uh, we're not producing uh, as well as uh, those older wells are dwindling?
Yep, um, well, two, right, well two, is our oldest well. Um, we've, we've experienced some production loss kind of long term. It also is our one well where we're picking up um, the contaminant PFOS. We are well below any threshold limits that would mandate that we abandon it. Um, but but that is something that um, you know, is, can be kind of a touchy thing perception wise. Um, so when you combine that with the fact that we're losing production, um, you know, wells fail, municipal ones are no different. Uh, we do have uh, biannual treatment uh, of this well, uh, which gives us, you know, maybe a four to six month, if if that, um, you know, sort of reprieve in production. Um, but uh, but long, long term, it's on a negative trend line. Yep.
I guess, I guess my concern more than anything else is is uh, with this cost, uh, are we ready for new growth as far as with this well? Or are we looking at more pressure because of growth?
Well, so that's what the capital development fees are for. Uh, I've referred specifically to water plant five. Um, you're you're correct. Um, and the uh, maintaining of the fund balance of the capital development fund. So again, going back to those blue bars, uh, that was the portion of the fund that was growing. While the operating and capital portion of the fund uh, was on the decline and about to go negative, um, the blue portion, the capital development portion um, has been increasing um, because of the development that we have seen. Uh, the development we have seen has not quite pushed us to the point of needing to um, kick uh, planning and engineering of a a new water plant into gear just yet. Um, but we are flexible in terms of when we we go to that and we've just been protecting the resources to do that because that is, that is, that is our our very biggest um, medium, you know, short to medium term uh, facilities expansion need. Uh, I think all of us here would agree at some point, we we will have to go there, it's just a matter of when.
And I, and I, I'm just as happy as I'm sure as you are as far as seeing those increases uh, in capital development fees coming in. However, uh, do you feel that maybe we, it's time that we reanalyze our our capital development fees? Uh, are we getting what we need to from new growth?
I, I mean, I, so I would-
Is it paying for itself actually?
I would say yes, because based upon um, you know, what we've seen as we've evaluated those, those, those fees, um, if anything, we we probably actually set them a bit too high. Uh, part of the process um, that we had talked about was also revisiting those capital development fees on some sort of regular interval. I think we talked about five years. Uh, so we were pursuing, the update was twenty nineteen, so we'd be looking at a twenty twenty four update, which um, is not nearly as far away as as we think anymore.
Okay. All right, thank you. Aldwin Miller?
Thank you, thank you Director Strange for your report. So help me understand, and I know this is going to be a long shot for you. Help me understand how IDOT tells us three million and then it goes to fifteen million.
Yeah, well, so those-
If I did that in my world, I'd get fired.
Yep, so, so those costs, uh, they were developed six, seven years ago now, when they first started developing the intergovernmental agreement. Uh, I, I looked into those numbers a little bit closer. They estimated based upon um, a flat unit cost of a hundred and fifty uh, dollars per lineal foot. Um, that is too low, that that's, that's, that's probably, you know, cost maybe developers pay on a site where they're not working under traffic and they're just installing new main in new ground with nothing in their way. Um, the cost that uh, Patrick Engineering has been developing is five hundred dollars per lineal foot. Um, that, that is, that is way on the high conservative side. Uh, a typical estimating number is in the three hundred dollars per lineal foot range, which is why I say we're probably going to land um, between those two. I actually have a utility coordination meeting with uh, IDOT and Patrick Engineering uh, the second week of January uh, to kind of refine our plan and really start to figure out um, what we can do to pare down those costs, specifically with sanitary sewer. Uh, we, we, we assess pretty much every sanitary sewer that is um, called out for replacement in their initial estimate. Um, Patrick Engineering has recommended lining and remaining in place for most of those. Um, sanitary is about a third of our uh, utilities on the project. Water main um, is the other two thirds. So the plan is uh, like I said, IDOT does allow you to put those um, those relocations into the construction plans for the roadway. Uh, and that, that will, we should be able to realize a dramatic reduction from that five hundred dollars per lineal foot uh, unit cost. So, we're going to be well in excess of three. Uh, I would be surprised if we're anywhere close to that twelve fifteen.
So in your best guess, given that IDOT's estimating too high and previously too low, do you think this project's going to come in at that two hundred dollars a lineal foot?
No, no, I think, I think it's going to come in, in say the three hundred dollars for lineal foot range. I think split the difference, so if they were, if IDOT was initially at three, um, Patrick is engineering is at twelve fifteen, so, you know, say the six to eight range probably is what can, is what our actual obligation is going to be. Um, and then, well, yeah, but those are, those are different funds. Um, and then um, we've got the-
So we have ARPA funds of three point six?
So we, yeah, our uh, our net may be, you know, closer to three, four. Uh, and then we do have some funding options. We can look at low interest SRF loans. Um, there aren't a lot of uh, grants for uh, water sewer projects unless you're a a low income community, which we probably, um, based upon the location, will not quite qualify. Um, but the low interest loan option uh, is a real one. Uh, you know, and, and like I said, that's, that is a cost that's going to have to be accounted for. Uh, it will probably have to be accounted for separately um, through some sort of a new fee.
Thank you for the explanation.
You're welcome.
Aldwin Sante, go ahead.
Aldwin Miller took care of like, one of the major questions I had because of that utility, and I appreciate uh, Administrator Morefield bringing it up and just, you know, we, we got to put it out there. We, we got to let the community know that there's a big number that's on our shoulders and we're, you know, we're not getting any assistance on it.
Well, and it's, it's important to note, this may seem to be unfair as this is a cost that the the IDOT is is putting on us. But you, communities as as agencies, as public agencies, we do decide our approach as far as um, utilities. You know, we, back when those utilities were installed, we took and accepted the risk of installing them in the state right of way um, with the understanding that when the state did come through and rebuild, um, it was going to be our obligation and our cost to get out of their way. Um, the more expensive uh, and more tedious thing to do at the time, which could have protected us more from these costs, would have been to um, secure our own property, secure our own easements, and get our own uh, place to put our utilities outside the state right of way uh, many years ago. And for obvious reasons, most, most communities don't, don't do that.
Did I have one quick, one quick question on a different topic that you brought up during the presentation? About um, um, accepting uh, quotes and proposals instead of going with competitive bid bidding? So just help me unders- help us understand, how does that benefit you in regards to, you know, how you can work with these quotes and proposals and, you know, in regards to sitting down with them, potentially working, working in numbers and making adjustments?
So I, frankly, that's, that's the, the most feasible way to implement these projects. Uh, like I said, um, for the mill stream list uh, station project, um, we, with our in-house staff, developed a uh, a bitable plan set to the best of our abilities with the resources we had. Uh, we did not receive any valid bids. Um, we then took the next step of, okay, so an in-house process uh, was unsuccessful. We're going to secure an engineer to uh, do a design for us.
Uh huh.
Um, when we started down the process of scoping that design scope of services um, with that firm, uh, they looked at uh, some of the um, the preliminary pricing proposals that we had from these um, uh, integration and programming vendors and the electrical contractors we were working with. And they actually recommended uh, that you're better off foregoing the um, the typical procurement process and just going directly with this pricing because it is, is fair, is reasonable. Um, and they acknowledged and recognized the challenge of blending professional services um, with capital construction in, in one contract.
Is, is this temporary or is this a future?
For projects of this, for four projects of this scale and scope, this will, this will in all likelihood become um, a fairly common practice. Uh, and based on our experience, uh, the alternative would be um, much bigger dollar, much bigger scope, um, much bigger duration capital construction projects. So rather than say a hundred thousand dollar um, hybrid project of uh, SCADA control uh, and electrical work, we, we might be looking at a, at a full facility uh, upgrade, overhaul, or maybe even replacement to the tune of several hundred thousand dollars.
I, I appreciate, thank you and you and your staff on the presentation tonight. No further questions.
Thank you. Any other questions by council? See none? Hey Chief, I know we talked in the past, what about some safety grants? Is there- Can you turn your mic, Chief?
Sorry. What the mayor's referring to is if there's any law enforcement related grants reference the street lighting and the sidewalks that council wanted to move forward with uh, to enhance pedestrian safety and bicycle safety. There may, there may or may not be some funding options that we can attempt to try to get because that's an additional cost, I believe, to this project on top of what Troy's referring to.
Correct. Uh, and just for council's clarification, we did submit for the ITAP program, uh, which the, the due date for the application was in November. Uh, we actually hired Patrick Engineering, again, they are the phase two designer um, for the, the roadway reconstruction project. We actually hired them, in addition to doing our utility relocation design, we hired them to do a uh, a grant application scope. Uh, we got letters of support from four or five elected officials and put together kind of the most comprehensive application we could, turned it on time and uh, we will know the results of that in the spring. Uh, we applied for about two and a half million dollars worth of federal aid specifically for lighting and pedestrian improvements.
Can you try? I, I just, I just wanted to thank Troy and the staff for putting this together. Hopefully, if anything, what council got out of this and the public watching got out of it is that we have a very uh, well thought out strategic plan now for identification and um, funding mechanism, at least for maintenance and replacement projects for the wa- for water sewer, uh, replacement projects and maintenance projects, much more planned and strategized than it's ever been, um, at least since I've been here. And Troy's also the one responsible for working with directors and putting together our new community investment plan for general fund projects, as you know. So uh, so the, the format will be similar for that, that that you'll see coming up here in January when we have that discussion. But I thought this was a good update for council and thanks again Troy for your hard work and you guys for putting this together.
I echo that, so, thank you.
All right, uh, sta- any staff reports this evening?
I just have one. Um, if council recalls, uh, Lennar gave a presentation for conceptual uh, subdivision on Draper Road, the old Johnson Farm, about two hundred and seventy seven single family home units. That was about a year ago. I did receive word this week that they have, uh, they are no longer under contract on that property and that they are not moving forward at this time. So, uh, Aldwin Harding, that's really for you and your constituents out there. So, um, I just wanted to let council know that.
Thanks Russ.
Any other staff reports?
None?
All right, um, I have no mayor uh, report tonight, city council comments? Aldwin Miller?
Um, I just want to thank city staff for inviting us to the luncheon on Friday. Um, that was a wonderful experience for me- that was a wonderful experience for me to meet a lot of the new people that I don't know, and I'm grateful for the invitation. Thank you very much.
Any- Alderman Glab, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to bring up, Troy, was it about ten days ago or so, that the, uh, we had that water main break on Oakwood, somewhere around ten days ago, and, uh, I got a phone call from, uh, one of the association board members, uh, over there, uh, that night. I, I took a walk over there, and what a mess. I mean, uh, the water was coming up, uh, between the easement and the sidewalk. Uh, water was probably about eight to ten inches high with the pressure, um, probably rolling down the sidewalk with all kinds of silt, uh, sand and everything else, uh, uh, probably three to four hundred feet. And, uh, staff was out there at the, the time, uh, just checking it out, one person. Uh, within thirty minutes, uh, we had three trucks, uh, large crew, uh, out there. Uh, needless to say, I didn't stay with them till two o'clock in the morning, but, uh, the next morning I rode by, and other than the fact that they had to cut the sidewalk open, it was just amazing how, uh, these guys worked until two o'clock in the morning, and everything was so, so clean. Uh, you would have thought they would have been all done during the day, and I just want to commend, uh, out publicly, I already called Troy the next day on that, uh, but I think publicly, uh, his staff needs to be commended on, uh, those type of jobs that they can do at two o'clock in the morning and, uh, and, and as clean as it was. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll relay the message.
Yeah. Alderman, glad you're going.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I want to thank the chief for taking me on a tour today through the, uh, police department, and I thought I was in the Starship Enterprise when we walked in the dispatch room. I mean, if, that place is really coming along. You're doing a good job. So, thank you. And with that, uh, Merry Christmas and, uh, Happy New Year, because we're not meeting.
Right. Frank, they didn't put you behind the bars, did they? Is that the story?
No, they're, but-
Big doors. Um, we are going to go into executive session, uh, for five ILCS, uh, one-twenty-two C, one, uh, for the appointment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees. So, I'd ask that all staff members, uh, besides Monty and the public, please exit the room, uh, for this executive session. There will not be any action after the meeting. We'll adjourn the meeting following the executive session.
So, can we leave then?
Yes. Everyone can leave, yeah. All staff members can leave besides Monty for the day, for the night.
And you.
Motion.
Yep, yeah. Can I get a motion to enter executive session? Alderman Miller?
I'll make that motion to move into executive session, please.
Thank you. Seconded by Alderman McClatchy.
Alderman Miller?
Present.
Alderman McClatchy.
Yes.
Alderman Glab.
Yes.
Alderman Sante.
Yes.
Alderman Harding.
Yes.
Alderman Devine.
Yes.